Thank you for making it today, so allow us to make the presentation. And then just before I start with a presentation about this year, which is important, about where we are in relation to the future. I just want to make a couple of comments and just really start by, as you know, this is the third year, or was it, that we set three years ago, where we had to find an empty building in our own city. So we've got probably about twenty-one million pounds of the next twelve or thirteen months that we're going to set up. And I just want to take this opportunity, and I think we all did, and should have done it, to pay tribute to our staff, peace casters in particular. And Noel Clayton has joined us recently, and told me he was our CEO, he's been here for some time. And Peta has been leading the financial team. But I just think on behalf of us all, and we look like all that's probably been, an absolute star of the work that you've done over the last few years, that being tremendous, so I just want to put on. Thanks. And thank you for your work, for your efforts. And then before I make any comments in terms of around the presentation as to where we are, it's good to see James Hook and our trade union colleagues back, as always, they take up to the H M, but also to our budget process. And I think it's important as well just to reflect and remind people that because of austerity since 2010, we've lost around about 3,000 members of our staff, and we've had to do things in a different way. And we've relied on our unions to actually support and help us provide services in different ways, but also to step up the pace and do more. And for that, I'm grateful, and that's why at the staff conferences that I've held recently, when I spoke to most of all of our staff, I say to them, I call on members of our staff to do it, trade union, because of this, protect you and where you are beside us, to make sure that we protect services and support our services moving forward. So thank you, James Hook and our trade union, for that. I'm going to see if we can make this work, and we'll see if it's on that one, but we're going to have to dip on. It'll be good if we can see the dip on. So we've got the board, obviously. That's my idea of that service. There have been no expected sussy in the cockerel. So before we leave, don't forget the song, wait for the... No, I'll do it later, the shadows will do. There's no sausage, I've got a lot of cheese, they demand it. I don't know whether we're going to get that fix. Just move on. Okay, to the first slide. Oh, I'm sorry. At least, I know there's representatives from the world over here, I believe, in the world, they have to give the regime back, because we couldn't work here, couldn't respond and speak at the same time. I don't know, yeah, but the world, it's a pushy truth. Okay, so, you know, just to give you just a little bit, I think it's important that we remind ourselves of the information, that's important to us, our residents, and I don't think we should actually fail from the reminder, the people of the, you know, failures and the facts that we manage as a political office, it's 292 million in business rates, 175 million in council tax. Of course, you know, we know that in terms of the city, it costs about 270 million pounds to run adult social care and children's social care. So 270 up, you know, well over a quarter of a billion pounds. And that figure is what we get, it's all through business rates and council tax. So you can see the challenges that we have in protecting and running other services. Okay, so just a couple of other things as well, if you look at, you know, sector, 31% if we have, the day mix of housing, if we have the same mix of housing as sector have, we have 55 million pounds more. We're getting on finish the other day, about 50% of the local housing stopped being in the social rented sector. And it was challenged, well, it's less than that, but the properties private rented sector, that is, we received all council tax and housing revenue, support from Britain England to stay in there, is top subsidized by us. And that's where we got the figure of 15% of social housing, because it's important to remember that we actually support and help people to stay private rented sector. Around a few million pounds in housing benefits, and a big chunk, it's around about 4 million pounds in discretionary housing. You'll see the 2.9% increase in council tax, which was consistent with what we said we would put it up by when we set the budgets three years ago, or two years ago, this is the final year. And if you recall, we also had the 2% adult social care reset, which we put into the budgets, which is now the base budget, because we front loaded it, so it enabled us to actually get more money to support adult social care. But 2% of that 2.9 is going on wages, in terms of wage paying for our staff, who we employ, and rightly so. So it gives us around about 1% to spend or pay on other things, as I said, that still doesn't help us solve the 21 million pounds that we've got to fund. If they're in our council taxpayers, so the three, one in three people who live in the properties in the city, receive support from the council subsidized, who have benefits or discretionary housing. And one in four of those are actually in work, low pay, poverty, which means that we still subsidize them, even though they're in work. And just remind you, there's only one city, Bristol, that supports discretionary housing in the way that we do, and they get 30 million pounds all year in council tax, that we should take pride in the fact that we help the poor in our city. A couple of things, just basically on where we're going to be in terms of 2020 and the challenges that we face. And the first, under review, we keep getting told it'll be ready in another three weeks, six weeks, four weeks, two months. And we've just recently been told you're going to get it in about four to six weeks. So of course, we're flexing everything that's going on, we still have it here. But the serious concerns from me and other core city leaders, because you're here, that 's always talking about creating a great support grant and taking away the deprivation element of it. So in a lot of ways, where we've been able to, as a result of the problems that we face, have sold more funding, of course, it looks like it's always a concern when they reduce the rate of support grants on the basis of taking away deprivation, which will impact on the poorest cities more than the richest, but we all know about that. And of course, there are still major problems for us with adult social care and children's social care. So we've actually, despite setting aside around about seven millions of pay extra in children's social care, we've actually put in seven million pounds that enables us to take on more staff, because our staff can't cope with the increasing workloads that they face. And we've been able to manage to give instructions to the chief executive and the director of children's services to recruit more staff. And I think it's 120 or 160 staff, each staff that will be taken on, and approximately started at the recruitment process. Of course, you know, Brexit is a huge unknown, considering what it's going to mean for the city, and I can't predict that. What I can predict is that, you know, whilst Brexit is going on, there's nobody talking to cities or engaging with cities about how they change or, you know, reshape policy areas. And it's been like that for about two and a half years, and you know, should we make the decision? But what is absolutely clear, I think if we have a long deal Brexit, then there's going to be serious problems that face us all. What we are trying to do is make sure that we support our NHS, with chief executives having conversations with agencies of major plays in the city, our utility strategy of what we can do, go to talk to our goal, and also talk to businesses, of what we can do to support them. And of course, the most important thing is, because we're all in city, we want to make sure that people feel welcome here, including members of our own staff, who are EU citizens, and we'll continue to make that absolutely clear to them. When we talk about what we've done as an administration since 2010, and talk about setting out our priorities and making it absolutely clear what we're about, what our strategy is, and how we are all to go about that. The two things that we talk about is about protecting the most vulnerable and supporting the most vulnerable in our city. And again, I don't think there's any city in the country that does it any better than what we do in our city, and that's despite the fundamental challenges that we face. I only, I read just a little bit of a report on a conversation about the chairs will fly away. I went to see the minister Chris Maylin about a week ago, with one member of staff, and we talked to him about the cost of taking down chairs will fly away, and then doing the work, or at least doing some work around it. We said, it'll probably cost about 11 million, about 6.6 and a half million to decommission chairs or flyaways, if we wanted to replace it, it'd cost about 60 million, to which Mr. Maylin replied to me, he said, well, I think if we take this to Treasury, Joe, he said, they will probably tell you to use your reserves. So I said to him, I gave him a copy of our budgets, and I said, you know, dear friend and mine, Mr. Pittles, told me to use our reserves, and for the last seven years, we've been paying adult social care 13 million pounds out of our budgets in these days, so we've got one left. I said, so we don't support this, what I'll do is I'll leave it standard, and I'll put a big banner on it saying, as a result of the toll, because we can't take this down. So he replied, I won't let them do it, Joe, and you know I'll do anything to help the city. So let's see if we get the budgets to take it down. It was a spending on reserves, which if you see the budget statements, it shows you that we are at the minimum, basic, sort of maximum level, what we can keep for these areas. The other reserves that we've got are the MR reserves, which we thought we can't use them, because they don't belong to us, which we could use and will be hard. So this is just, because I keep reminding you about us protecting, and that's when try to approach a growing economy, but also about using that to protect people. It's just important that we look at what we do spend and how we spend it, it comes back to our challenge, everybody in the city, to prepare us to where you are in the city across the country, and look at what we spend and what we do in comparison. 57 million pounds we spend on supporting vulnerable people in our city, the discretionary housing payments, the crisis payments, the benefits nationalization, the hardship fund, council tax support, and again, you know, Martin Youngwitz, Jay Corpus, making sure that those in need are supported through our benefits maximization, to make sure that we get that. And there are many other things that we do, using the labour fund, the mares fund, to give the poverty, and all kinds of things that we do to support people. There you go, in terms of work facility, our home, there's 750 beds we support and pay for for hospitals every night. 7,000 families are helped by us every single year, in terms of staying in their accommodations, staying in their houses, raised by Public Health England, and also by shelter. So again, we should be proud of that library house, the only council shelter in the country that's open to everybody, to everybody, no matter where you come from, and it's open every single night. And the other, our thing is in terms of rough streetness, let's stop being complacent or saying we've done enough, because we haven't. That's why we're funding and paying for a new library house, even bigger, to support and make sure that we support and protect homeless people, people on the streets, people with drug addiction problems, to try and give them hope, to try and give them hope that we're not just giving them a roof over their head every night, but we're engaging with them, helping them to cope off addiction, and give them hope for a job and work to do, so that they can turn their lives around. And that's, if you look at the 160 social workers that were engaged, I just mentioned that. And the reason why I did that as well, because we talked to staff, Steve Ready and Barry himself, we went and spoke to staff as we do, and it was really heartblating to listen to the case loads as a social worker yourself, I know what it's like when you've got, you know, the demands and the pressure on you, and you're taking work home. You know, some people were distraught, and they're taking work home, were working extremely hard. So it's right that we addressed that, and we're recruiting and employing 160 new social workers. In the same 15,000 people we helped with adult social care, we're building three new dementia halls, round the, you know, the book, round the bookers, all the dementia halls that we built, it's so good to those people, wasn't grateful that you did during your time, we're all on dementia halls and all that, we go proud of that. When the LGA came, a woman in the office of the LGA said, I've never seen a city do more of what you're doing to support dementia in our country. And we built three more, so that allowed that 150 people, and also created some jobs in there. And then continue, you know, protecting the vulnerable, protecting our services. And when we have a look at, you know, 450 libraries across the country closed, none here in our city, similar with children's centers, 350 none here in our city. And then, you know, look, as I said, how we've used our reserves, we've used our reserves to support those most in need and the vulnerable in this city. And then coming back to the point around how we transform our city and how we change our city. It's only by doing things, investing, sensible socialism, that we're able to buy into services, bring services back in house, transform how we do things, and use inclusive growth to make sure that we transform communities, and we transform and regenerate communities, and create jobs. That's what we're doing up and down the city of Liverpool. And if you look at, you know, and what we do, if you look at those things that we've showed you on the slide previously, but look at what we've done since Exley. Exley, don't forget about it, locked in legal disputes between this council and Deans. We've unlocked that, and at this juncture, we've only just over a day built on Exley, with which walls to come. We're getting 3 million pounds again now in business rates revenue than we did before, 3 million pounds that has enabled us to actually protect services. 7 million pounds in the business rates, from business rates in speak. You have the guy Neil, Montal Hoads factory, gone from 60 staff to 240 staff. Seppiress Pharmaceutical Company in speak, again supported by a city, supported by state funding, with quality top jobs, all bringing in 7 million pounds a year. Money that we're using to subsidize and pay for services to protect people. Socialism, sensible socialism in action, developing our economy, growing our economy, creating jobs and protecting people, that's what we're doing at this administration. And then if you look at the number of houses since 2010, when we had 127 million pounds taken away from us in housing, we might have been able, and yes, it's wonderful that Homes England have moved into Van Iron, and they gave us 7 million pounds for the League Nation way. Never refuse anything other than the laws we've accepted, and that's why we welcome that money. But I reminded them that they took away 127 million pounds in housing, but we'll throw up in a first instance. And what we've done in terms of housing in this city is do no small thanks to them. But if you look at those figures, if you look at that 11,000 new homes from 2010 through to today, bringing in 9 million pounds in revenue that we didn't have before. So if you look at those figures, that in total is around 20 million pounds that we're now bringing in, which we did because of our investment in a strategy. And if you look at the city's centre population, 181% of people have moved in, up by 25,000. And you know, we've just had a report from Centre of Cities in the Bay, saying we haven't got enough office space in our city. And that's why we're developing in Palma, on the old X James railway station. And we're going to bring in quality jobs, top quality jobs, for your children and your grandchildren, and for this city's future. And we'll also develop better open space than exists there now. That's what we have to deal with, that's what we have to face, we have to face sorts of problems that we have in this city. And we have the challenge of by doing innovative things and protecting as well at the same time our relief spaces, which is what we do. If you look at the investment, just in terms of, I don't remember, you know, the criticisms that we have about our investment strategy from our friends on the benches here, about Fitch Farm, 800,000 pounds a year, it brings in now, probably around about 2 million that we've had from Fitch Farm in beds. Q and R building now paid for 11 million we got from New City Building, the money that we save on Millennium House and the rest, that we get, the income that we get from that, we bought the Q and R building, it's now almost paid for and paid back, we took just under 2 million pounds as rent roll, and it's now estimated to be in excess of 30 million pounds. The apprenticeships, and all the things that we've done, have been done with our support, using funding and money, working with others, and working with the private sector to create that. Because investment doesn't just mean about getting, taking money, and that's why our investment strategy in all the schools we built, make sure that the local supply is used, and we've got apprenticeships and jobs being created. Just talking about another example of how we do investment. If you look at Crofton Park, because of the challenges that we face in terms of the budget, the cost that we have to pay, we were not making 60,000 pounds cut in in Crofton Park, but because we invested in CBPs, the B C comes to Crofton Park, the money that we made, we're not making any cuts in Crofton Park, so the 60,000 pounds gone back to use, that's another way of doing investment. It's about investing and making sure that we're getting in money and we support people. And then, let's just have a little bit of that, just have a little bit of those figures, and, you know, just take a picture of them, refresh it, you know, send it to your... The level of investment in this city is second to no other city in the country. Look at it, there's 20 billion pounds level of investment that's coming in in construction schemes right across the city. If we had one of them, let's just take patterns and build along parts of the failed building schools of the future, where we took a school, we actually took the school with artificial plants, and instead of developing on that site, we put them in a part of the city where we wanted to bring back regeneration. And we've got 38 is a prime land with a rather cancer center, the Catholic School of Language working with the Royal, the hospital, but working with also the university of Liverpool. You look at the Royal College of Physicians, thousands of jobs for our city, thousands and thousands and thousands of pounds, with a new income in business rates, millions every single year, as a result of what we're doing, and thousands of jobs being created on that site. We've done that, we've developed that despite austerity. So what we're planning for is not just to manage what we've done over the last nine years, but we're looking ahead and looking forward to the next nine years, about what we leave as a legacy for our city moving forward. And you know, when I look at, I was talking about the Garden Festival site, and it comes back to how do you want to see the last of our four or our 30, or how do you want to betray the administration? Langford had the Garden Festival site for the last days and years, doing nothing with it, boarded up, you know, you couldn't go on it, you couldn't go on it, it was boarded up, it was full of tronies, cars, derelict. We've invested in that site, we've opened it up, we bought it for £5 million, then we invested and opened it up, and now we're going to build around 15 hundred houses, it's going to bring jobs, living thousands of jobs, for different services, electric companies, and we're building houses on it. And there'll be 43 acres of new land that people can access and go onto, that we didn't have before, because it was so empty, now we own it, now it's a park, and now we're going to develop it, and also protect that park and that green space. 43 acres of grassland that we're protecting and keeping, that we are so proud of developing. Now, which that's something to celebrate, that's what we're all about, that is green space, and taking advantage of these spaces, that's what we should be telling people out there in the city, instead of picks of gardens. Okay, and then if we look at the schools, but I'm not going to let this go past without reminding people of the 16 brand new schools that this city council has built over the last five, six years. School, safety schools, primary schools, 2,000 construction jobs, 100 apprenticeships, 62% of that money spent with local authorities that kept them on foot, and kept them on late in difficult times, called by the Tories, that's what we thought as a Labour administration with sensible socialism. And look, 14,000 kids in brand new schools, using brand new facilities that we didn't have before, because the Tories took 350 million pounds away from us in building schools for the future. But we've managed, and not one pair of harnesses, not one pair of harnesses. And I've just talked to you about patterns and birds. You know, I'm not going to, but I am actually, I am going to. My vision, my vision, me, I wrote that. Officers told us to build a school on that site, and I said, no. Let's talk of the new technology, let's talk of the new Royal Hospital, let's talk of the university, let's talk of the, let's talk of the school of tropical medicine, let's talk of the knowledge for water, and let's develop it. And that's exactly what we're doing. This will be probably one of the most important projects in the UK, and certainly in Europe. And you know where we link it? With Brownlow, and we link it with Central Docks, and we link it with Nelson Dock, and we link it with our cruise line entertainment, and we link it with the Isle of Man Beach. And then we link King's Dock with the jobs that we're creating in King's Dock, thousands of new jobs. And then we look at the Garden Festival site, five miles down our river, we're transforming this city, five miles. Nobody in Europe will receive developments of that scale, with billions of pounds, with thousands of jobs, and it's happening as a result of a labour deficit. And then it is five miles of water from one end of the dock to the others. And we've worked with H C A, with the Old England, and others, to take back control of that land. That's why the school waiting to do what I'm saying, the Littlewood Building will develop, the knowledge for water around Mount Pleasant. the knowledge for water around Mount Pleasant and what we're calling a new upper central of the city, linking to Paddington Village and all in our own right with hundreds of millions of pounds worth of developments. And then we made the investment opportunities are going to provide income for our city moving forward, post presses and hopefully even when we get a labour programme, we're hoping we'll be soon. Honestly, I just wanted to leave that, and if anybody was talking about green space, just look at that. That sort of grasslands, 47 acres of accessible green space, there's more green space in this city now than there has ever been. More green space in this city now than there has ever been. And we are a minimalist nation that governs for the whole city. The poorest areas of the south and the north and the south and the afternoon areas of the south, we govern for everybody and we'll do the right thing. And that's why we will protect that 47 acres and maybe open grassland on the prime water foot of our city and we'll continue to do more of that. Brownie Ball Dock, as I said, look at it, catalyst for five of our building, we had Mr Kemp in his blog, talking about the cost to the council. Well, I was, obviously there are all sorts of evangelical here and saintly and christening man, but I was at church with Mr Kemp on Sunday and there was a quote from the Gospel read by the bishop, who talked about the parable of Jesus' name, and the parable was something of the lines of, "If you want to take the slit of your brother's eye, remove the plight from your own." Here it is. That was the parable of Jesus, if that's something Sunday will, right, of course. You know, there's a man whose administration has left us 11 million pounds in PFI payments every single year before I even sit down to manage the budget. We have to find 11 million pounds and he sits there pontificating whether it's about St John's Fraternity, which has got 15 years we're tied into, and over 100,000 pounds a year, and he pontificates about what we're doing. And you look at those figures of what we're bringing in in terms of the economy and the jobs we've created, 31,000 jobs, 11,000 new houses, 16 new schools, services protected, leisure, libraries, children's centres. Take the plaque out of your eye. I know what I do with the plaque, but you know. The cruise line and terrible, look at that, the cruise line and terrible and the Iron Man Bay, that's what would be next to it. 123 million pounds of loans, thanks to the citizens of the combined authority going in, a really fantastic opportunity again that's going to bring in huge benefits, huge tourism, huge infrastructure improvements, but also more importantly, business rates and jobs, 500 new jobs, 3,600. Remember when we took control in 2010, we used to get two cruise liners a year coming to the light and dock next to the scrapyard, look at it now, yeah, 87 cruise ships last year and we want to top that, we will top it when we have our cruise liner which is started to weigh down. And there's Pall Mall, Pall Mall on the back, where Exchange Street Station used to bring out, the type of papers are born and go off the living across town, that's Pall Mall, that's where we're building. And as I said, the reason why we're doing it is because our city can't stand still. Every day I fight to bring the investments into this city, every single day. We've got legal companies like Law Cross, but bigger companies like Taylor Weston have moved into our city. And that's because we lobby them and tell them about what we're doing in our city and we also lobby them and tell them about grey day office space that we're going to have and the facilities that they need. And if we don't happen, because we were competing against the leaders of the area, if we didn't happen, that's where it can go. So the bottom line is we've got to have those spaces, we've got to have those facilities and we've got to have that space. I keep saying to everybody, and I have done since 2010, I've always said that we have serious problems and what goes, what's around the corner in 2020. I always say that because I don't know. And we have to wait up to November or December to see finally what the government's saying. But it's always about the unknowns and it's also about the known unknowns. We know that, we know the challenges we face, but we don't know how government's going to do the fifth, form it, we don't know about presses and what's going to happen. But I keep telling people that the opportunities that this city has have away, the challenges that we have. We are a city that is open for business, there's a vibrancy about our city, there's a real pulse, there's a real excitement about our city and our best days like ever. And I know if we stick solidly, reasonably to our approach to grow our economy, regenerate our communities, we can actually support the poor school in difficult times because that's what we're proud of as a socialist administration delivered for this city.
Are there any questions on the statements?
Bill, we can do the statements of the chief finance officer on the estimation collapse of the full budget 2018, 2019, and the force of the estimates 2019, 20, the adequacy of the reasons and the data from 2019 to 2020, I said, on basis 26 to 62 of the council presented there to be noted and announced, needs to be agreed to, happens also to the all the statements.
Are there any questions on the statements, council members?
Can I thank the Lord that the mayor for his presidential seat, you know, with many of us, I'm just sorry, I was a constructor, I should certainly do agree with the president to say, I do agree with some of the issues with the lack of the city making a clear argument for the city. The two questions I'd like to ask you, my mayor, and you might be on shift, I might also maybe ask others to come back. One of the drawbacks in Oxford Terrace community is still being, the last two years, a slight modest increase in number of terrorists in, or making lots of houses in the territory of the city. Certainly the measures that we're including, I heard councillor Tack speaking earlier on not to make it something very sensitive to get back into use, welcome that. Certainly in the land's licensing fee may or may not be helping in some of the ways. Is there any issues that the mayor feels we might share the council, because it's actually about getting more money for council maintenance, but also helping the impact from the residents in the long term, because those are often the conundrums for crime and devaluing neighbour properties. The second question, I noticed one about saying that if you're a developer of a whole city, I don't think that I'm fair to say, one of the disappointments has five years the mayor gave us a statement saying that there was going to be a very few of the houses at site and this long-term area is subject, would be subject to many developments. Is there any plans to keep start that, subject to clearly the problems of previous shortcomings? Because it is not just an impact on the wall, it has a clear, visible impact, but an invisible influence in the city, in the foreground, seeing such a dangerous site looking severely abandoned. I have to also say, I'm very, very concerned with the current state of the size of that type of dangers, the services going to the other schools, could be in a general sense not open. And I have been in touch with city builders, constructors and certainly having significant threats in the elements, which is much unusual. So I'd be grateful for those who can come to the mayor, could add your comments, I'll just hear your followings.
A couple of things, I've had a few phases before, but I think the last one phase about the half of the site, you're absolutely right, it's been a slant and not a good name, but a good act. I think there are, there have been issues with ownership and stuff like that. And the last time I sold it, it was about three months ago, I put in the ownership and that would bring me forward to some of the problems. What I promise you, I'll do tomorrow, I'll say so, and if there is no plan or proposal, that's going to be doing something within the next three months. And I'm, it's still a secret, it's a local policy basis and that land bad for, because it's been like that far too long. So at the end of the day, the numbers if we don't go up to say, we're going to buy it and then the price goes, we'll have a CPO, which means that we'll get a boundary that the owner has to accept. So we'll first ask them, we're up to, and if it's not settled back, then we will offer that, I promise to keep it there for the business and we'll look at what we need to do, okay? So we will look back on that very quickly. On the points around Chief Group and Kensington and Part of Kensington as well, because we're expecting that, and those as well, will be an impact on our confidence in the city and stuff. But we also very, very believe in that, how, and we hear you talk about violations and how we buy up empty properties in Chingham, we entered in an after-revenue, and we look at stabilising communities, that's what we intend to look at doing. But Chief Detective, I know, has been saying about, we're talking about inclusive growth, how we actually develop areas, and the conversations about this, we'll be talking about. But we need to talk to all the leaders and say what we can get, but we also need to look at what we can do in terms of leading, and I know maybe it's council leaders looking at that as well. And I'll talk about it later, when we talk about the payment, we're supposed to have conversations with leaders about how we look at the council and what we think we're supposed to do in the future. And that will be also included in how we set up after we get a House and Select Committee to make sure that these things are on the agenda and could have a specific...